I call this meeting in order, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public input. We have one individual, Watel Lopez, on subject matter, general comments regarding community affairs. You have five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Watel Lopez. I live here in Silver City. Thank you. And I just want to say I'm also happy that it's five minutes. I remember when the council passed that, and it made me feel really good because going to so many meetings throughout my life, I always see people cut off real quick and short, and so thank you for that. I'm going to begin my comments. I'm here to primarily tonight to speak in general about what I see, being a father, working in this community, participating, going to meetings, and discussing matters with other community members about how businesses run in our town. I'm here to share and to speak from heart about what I see as corporate management of our communities, a basic, I guess, mimicking of how the country manages its affairs business-wise, which is most often times a detriment to the community and to the finances and to the fabric of our families and our community. I'd like to begin with letting you know that last Friday I went to a viewing of a video that a group of people in the community showed on the water meters, on the radio frequency meters, and it was very informative, and I saw the reporter there listening in, but I didn't see any council members. And it would have been nice to see somebody there, just to watch, even if you didn't agree with it, or if the decision's been made already, to watch that video and get some education. It really affected me deeply. And then, I had been researching this prior, you know, decade ago, about cell phones, so... And then I'm learning more about cell towers, and this video helped drive the point home that they're a danger to the community, they're unhealthy, and they're... It goes into some other areas that... I welcome you guys to watch it. It's called Take Your Power Back, and you can view it at takeyourpowerback.com. You can view it from your own home, as a matter of fact. You don't necessarily have to go to a meeting, and I know how compromising sometimes that can be as a public representative, going to another, a meeting, and maybe possibly seeing that you're showing one-sidedness. So I can understand that aspect of it, but it would have been nice to see somebody there from our council. This, what affects me personally is that it seems like it's been a unilateral decision that has been made with no opt-out. When I read in the paper that our town manager said, "There's no opt-out," I don't remember anybody ever having a community meeting. I know there was some discussion, there was meetings that where people were allowed to speak and share their ideas about it, but I didn't see the council put it to a vote. I didn't see a moratorium being placed on it, especially after community members said there may be a danger, a hazard. We could have put a moratorium on it and said, "Okay, let's have some education about this in the community, let's vote on it and see what the community wants, if they want it or if they don't want it," and then make a decision. But to unilaterally say this is going to go put be put on public property, and then eventually what it's going to get to is electronic meters on the house, this is worrisome and troublesome to me. So I hope, now this being an election year, that the incumbents or the people who are seeking office would actually try to put a moratorium on it and actually reverse it and put a hold on it, and then put it to a vote. Let the community decide whether or not they want those meters beaming radio frequency waves into their homes and affecting their health, whether you're sensitive or not. I think it's an issue that's so important that it should be put before the community in that way. When I said corporate manager of our community, I'm talking about the decisions that are being made unilaterally by the mines, by the councils, by the school board, by the university, by the county commission, on issues that have to do with finance. The county commission supported wholeheartedly the diversion of the Hela River. They're actually sponsoring the county planner, who just became the head of the cap entity, who's going to now formally resign as the county planner, to pay himself as the cap entity executive. And what I called that, I called that, and he sat there and told the county commission, "I don't think Mr. Lopez is correct on what he's saying." It just turns out they appointed Antoni Gutierrez as the executive of the cap, and there's a lot of money to be made. I think they're going to pay it all, pay all themselves off, and then say, "Oh, we're not going to build it after all." Then he'll go back to doing work in the community. So, and they did this unilaterally. The whole room was filled, and professionals from every background said, "This is detriment to our community, do not divert the river." But they formed a board of their own friends, their own, like a clique of people who are making decisions for the whole community on the environment. Well, now, I know you guys stood against that, and I was proud that day, but I went back and I thought about it, and I said, "You know, maybe it just wasn't economically feasible, it wasn't profitable." And when I thought about the legal weighing in, the town attorney, and then the assistant town manager, and they weighed all the numbers, and they said, "We're not going to get into this contract." It was all about finance. It never, I never once heard anybody talk about the sentient being that that river is, the animals that are going to be affected, how our kids in our future are going to be able to enjoy that forest and that water. I never heard that. So here we are again, making decisions based primarily on corporate management of our community. I talked about the county commission, the town, the mines are the biggest one. I was hoping, when they decertified the union at the mines, this is a union town, salt to the earth. When they decertified it, the union at the mines, there was no proclamation by the town to say, "We support the workers of the mine to have a right to have a voice on the job with regard to wages, hours, and working conditions. We disagree with that corporation did. They brought somebody from another place in, an ex-con in, got the paper signed, and got the union out of there." And, I mean, I never heard a proclamation from anybody saying, "Hey, we disagree with that, and we're going to raise the minimum wage at the city of Silver City." We've got people in Santa Fe right now, corporate executives, saying, "We want it across the board, we don't want towns to be having minimum wage decisions being made, you know, Las Cruces makes 10, 25 an hour, we're not going to allow that." But it's funny, they want it across the board, but they want it across the board down here. They don't want it across the board up here. The Republicans up there in Santa Fe are saying, "Well, let's have a minimum wage law, but let's keep it down here." Same thing, when they raise their fees, I mean, when they raise, they give themselves their raises every year, they don't raise the prices of commodities, but...
That's fine.
I'm sorry. If I may close really quick. The last thing I'd like to say really quick to conclude is that they're trying to shut us down at the Silver School Board and eliminate public comments. I think it has to do with the tower that's being built in the field there, and they don't want anybody to talk about that tower being built right behind the football field there. If they continue to shut us down, the only thing this town is going to see eventually is rebellion, organized strikes, boycotts, everything, unless we start governing our town in a way that's conducive to the community and not just finance, not just money and numbers. So I thank you so much, and I think one place we can start is going back to getting down to this ground floor level where the community resides. When I first arrived in this town, almost a decade ago, these benches were down on the ground. Whenever we speak to public representatives, these benches are getting higher and higher and higher, and we're having to look up at these representatives who think that they're CEOs of our town, they're not. So let's get back to grassroots, let's help our community, and thank you so much for listening to my thoughts here today.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Conna?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do is just to recognize that our longest-serving member of the cemetery board, which I'm a part of, Ryder South, passed away this past week, and several of us were at his memorial today. And he was just such an incredible man. He always made us all feel really welcome on cemetery board, even the newcomers, and so he's going to be very, very much missed, so I just wanted to mention how much we all appreciated the work that he did for about 20 years on the cemetery board, and also in several other organizations around town. He was very, 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 very involved in our town. And if you go, if you go to the Memorial Lane Cemetery, he was very responsible for keeping the Rose Garden as beautiful as it is, so just think about him when you go out there. On another note, I just wanted to let you know about a couple of events that are going on this week. It's Valentine's Day weekend, so there's a lot of groups that are doing events, including the WMU music department. The music department is not funded very well, so they have to do their own fundraising, and they're having a date night on February 11th. It involves dinner, flowers, a picture with your date, and it's also sponsored by the American Association of University Women, and that's on, again, on Thursday, February 11th, at 5:30 and 7:30. And then on Saturday, they're having a tea party, also to raise some money to maintain their pianos, and that is going to be at 4 o'clock, and it'll involve English tea and cookies and sandwiches. And for either one of those, if you want information, you can contact Dawn Chambers, who is a professor of music, and her phone number is 575-538-6449.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the rest of the council people here for bringing up the subject of the charter. I think it was long overdue, and I hope we can pursue it from now on. Also, I want to say something in Spanish. Vamos a votar poco pronto a mayor and for councilors. Conna, en veresa. Por favor, voten. No le hacen porque voten? I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Linda Smith, Linda Smith, right, Amson Smith. Por favor, voten. There's three candidates, tres candidatos que van a votar mayor. Por favor, voten. No le hacen porque, pero voten. Another thing is that for the Blues Festival, we're going to have a bike run, and it's going to be a benefit bike run, and it's going to be for Kobe girls softball, Silver Heights girls softball, a couple of girls. There's going to be some from Damin, I believe from Nordberg, and some from Albuquerque. They're going to have, they've been invited to go play in Italy, and we're going to raise funds for them, so everything that we're going to do for the bike run is going to be for the girls, for America's team. Hopefully that you guys can find in your pockets and give them some funds. Thank you.
Councilor Amson Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the police officer who was sitting at the corner of Pope 180, and made everyone who was going to be coming to the stop sign be much more gracious and calm to see that car there, so thank you. Also want to acknowledge the prospectors and all of the citizens who came up for Grant County Day. It was two words I'm going to say, exhilarating and exhausting, but I think we came back having accomplished a few things, and perhaps one of my other councilors wants to say a few more things. February 13th is Charter Day at the museum, the first celebration after the Charter Resolution. And I just, after having come from chocolate advantage this weekend and reflecting on the fabulous community, I just once again want to thank all of the people who are committed to the health and well-being of our community, and are committed as volunteers, making this a better place to be.
Thank you. Councilor Beddson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did want to mention about the territorial charter day. The celebration is from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday at the Silver City Museum, so I'm excited about it. This is the first year, I think it's going to get bigger and better with every year, because Silver City is so unique in terms of self-government, as the mayor had said, you know, two weeks ago, and the fact that we actually have a power that no other municipality within the state actually has, because it's a territorial charter. So I'm excited about the citizens learning more about that and about what the charter is all about. I also want to, I'm a, am a Grant County prospector, I think I've been one for over 15 years, and it was exhausting, and it was informative, and I want to thank Councilor Amson Smith and Councilor Conna for both being there. I think that our presence along with our town manager's presence at the meeting with the local government division with Rick Lopez, really ensured, along with all of the other municipalities and Grant County itself, being at the table, talking about the fact that we were $2 million down in reimbursements, and prospectors was able to bring home that Thursday, $600,000 to our communities, and more is on the way, and hopefully for Silver City as well, because I know we have outstanding reimbursements that we're waiting for. So it wasn't just that, I think that along the way, we really made sure that our voices were heard, the needs of our community were heard, and that, I think that we may see something where the tourism department hopefully will reevaluate the tour of the Heles event proposal, and we may get some money for that, if there's money left over. So exciting all the way around, so thankful for all of those local residents, as one of our, trying to remember who said it, is there anyone left in Grant County? The room was packed, and to have that sort of strength behind the prospectors, it really did show that we all love our community, no matter where we lived in Grant County, and that we were all supportive of making sure that we got those things that we need to come back to us here. And those monies that you pay in taxes will come back home to us for use, for increasing, making sure that roads and sidewalks are done, making sure that all those needs that we have are fulfilled. So I want to thank everyone, and I do want to thank all the reporters that were up there and all the excellent coverage that we've had. And I also want to mention Ryder South. I actually met him as the museum director back in the 1990s, because he was a member of the Town and Country Garden Club, and that's the museum director at Western, and that's how I knew him first. And he was so gung-ho about making sure that we had a native plant garden on the new entry in the back on Alabama, that he, along with other Town and Country Garden Club members, spearheaded that. And I can't thank him enough for his service there and his service on, of course, on the cemetery board. It was a fitting tribute, I think, today for him at the service, and I appreciated the fact that I could attend and say goodbye temporarily until I too am seeing him in the next life, so. Just thanks again to everyone who's volunteered, who does anything for the town. We know that sometimes it can be a somewhat thankless job, because people, you know, you have to go to meetings, you're not getting paid, but we thank you, and I know the citizens thank you, because your service on our boards, your service on any number of different community committees, and different sort of, whether you're, you know, part of the Members' Region Arts Council, part of the Tour of the HeLa, all of that makes a difference to our town, to make us who we are, and to make us the unique venue and the unique place that we all love to live, which is Silver City and Grant County. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'm going to keep mine short so that we can get our auditors out of here as quickly as possible, but I'm glad that everybody was bringing up the Charter Day, which will be the first Charter Day that we have here in Silver City, and that, I'm glad that the museum is putting on a little display and a little celebration for that. It is a very unique document, very important. In fact, on so many different levels, including even as Mr. Lopez was talking about, it's set this town on a path for a community spirit and community dialogue, and trying to better our community in spite of other governments, the state, the territory at the time. It really is a community effort and trying to advance ourselves to the best of our abilities. So hopefully everybody attends and goes and visits the museum Saturday 13th. And with that, does anybody need round two? Councilor Conna?
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, you all snuck out on me before I could say something, so I just wanted to publicly thank the members of the Towne Silver City staff that are with us this evening. Our job is pretty easy, because you all know what you're doing and you do it so well. So if Renee, Amanda, Stephen, and Anita could stand, so we can thank you, please, for the work that you do. And the rest of you will be hearing about what they've been doing during the auditing of our...
Anybody else need round two?
Yes, sir.
Any changes to the agenda? Councilor Beddson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to move New Business Item A, approval, disapproval of the Towne Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, to above Item 11, Approval of Consent Agenda. Or do you want it moved further? Above reports.
Reports will be small.
Okay. Okay, that's what I move, I move to move.
Do we have a second? Councilor Amson Smith?
Second motion to move.
We have a motion and a second to move New Business Item A above Item 11, Approval of Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda's changed. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. Councilor Amson Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Towne Silver City for January 26th, 2016. Mr. Mayor, second motion to stay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Towne Silver City, January 26th, 2016. Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, staff reports.
The animal control officer should be starting in the next couple of weeks. She's having her physical today, so as soon as that's okay, then she'll start working. Second, the signal lab, there were some changes that were required by the DOT, and as far as the location of that base, and which requires some additional parts, which the DOT are providing. So it's rather than the eight weeks, we're probably looking more like two to three weeks, so it shouldn't be too long.
And just going along with what Councilor Amson Smith mentioned, hopefully we can get some police presence, especially around the rush hour times, just to monitor that. I think drivers are getting a little more lax now that they're getting used to that being a four-way stop.
He's right there, super hero.
Perfect. No other reports? Next item on the agenda, under New Business A, Approval, Disapproval of the Towne Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015. Mr. Brown?
We've received our approval to release our audit. We've got Jeff from Kubiec. I can't read it. With our auditor, so if you want to come up to the...
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, I am Jeff Mamro, Audit Manager with Kubiec Milton and Associates CPAs. I'm sure you're used to seeing Michael Stone from Stone McGee. There is a rule where the audit needs to change every X amount of years. We were the replacement auditor for June 30th, 2015. With that noted, I know a transition can be a difficult thing. I would very, very much like to thank the governance and the employees, who have already received their applause, of Silver City for making the transition as smooth as possible. And also, by the way, this is dope.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Trehill. I'm the partner in charge of the audit at Kubiec Milton.
I'll get really quickly to the meat and potatoes of the audit itself. The results of the 2015 audit for both the financial statements and federal awards was an unmodified opinion, which is the exact opinion that you would like. There were actually zero findings for the financial statement for this year. There are a couple minor things that were addressed with management. I did not think that they required written documentation at this time, and I think that they understand what's going on. There's one finding with the federal awards related to the HIDA. Basically, it's an expense finding. Documentation was not recorded to the level that it should be. It was noted. Your data collection form to the feds was actually submitted and accepted also. That finding went in with that. Other than that, the analytical differences between the two-year, despite a change in auditors, was below the threshold that we deem acceptable. Everything that I looked into, there was an increase in revenues, corresponding, increase in expenses. Everything was pretty much expected. No real issues to note on that. I would note, there is a new standard set forth by the Office of the State Auditor for 2015, which is the GASB 68, related to pension liability. So you'll see a new liability in your audit that doesn't come directly from us, that is a state-mandated rule, so that is your pension and your para. That is on there, added for your general police and fire. So you'll see that liability, that's the difference. That caused the majority of your restatements for 2015. There's usually going to be restatements when there's a transition of auditors. There's just always some difference in the way things are done. Stone McGee's obviously an excellent firm. Michael Stone's excellent peer reviewer in the state. We just do things, you know, a little different here or there. But no real noted issues. I would say that the city, when it can, should keep more accessible cash to make sure that you can cover a three-month period in the event of any kind of issue. It's the only real going concern that I have. Other than that, I think we can open it up to any questions that anyone has.
Councilor Beddson?
I have a quick question on what you just said, about keeping more accessible cash for a three-month period. And the reason I'm asking this is because I know that the state auditor looks at cash balances, and if they think they're in excess of what he deems as appropriate, then it opens up the opportunity for the legislature to... I mean, this has been a discussion at the league level, at the Board of Directors. The concern for, yes, we always keep our 1/12, but being careful not to exceed it.
Well, I believe the situation is because of cash flow, because we...
Okay.
Of the other issues.
Yeah.
It's not so much those things, it's about cash flow.
Okay.
Because we have so many outstanding grants, we need to keep cash flow in, and that's why we passed the quarter percents last year.
Right.
Help increase cash flow, which we had talked about earlier. We had done it before we actually had the audit. So that was discussed, and we've been working on increasing the cash balance, balance in the general fund through gross receipts to address that.
I just, I guess, the only reason, like I said, is the caution of seeming to have money that we know that we will be using, you know, to match that cash flow, as you said, and not having our legislators or someone think that we're just kind of stockpiling money. I'm sorry, we've never been really dumb.
And, Councilor, I can address it. Mr. Brown and I did actually discuss this matter.
Okay.
I'm mainly just noting it. He understands the situation. Just wanted to get it, get it out there, but everything has been addressed, and he is 100% correct.
Well, that's good. So I was just, you know, it was just the way I think it was stated, it kind of caught my ear.
And in all honesty, pretty much every kind of question that I have this year, he and I were able to address in a matter that I found satisfactory, because I did have a few other concerns, that was one that I thought should be addressed. He's doing a very solid job, let that be noted also.
Well, that's why, as Councilor Conna has already said, we greatly appreciate our staff. I mean, they make us look very good, because they're the ones making sure that we're, that everything's flowing smoothly, and that we have stability in our financials, and making sure that we provide what we can for everything that we do, and essential services and beyond that, so.
And actually, while I'm remembering it, there was one other thing I wanted to note, the, and this has also been addressed, the IT at the city itself is a little outdated. You know, there's nothing I'm going to personally do about that. You know, there's nothing I'm going to personally do about that, but, yeah, it's seen better days, let's just put it that way.
And even that one, we're, we're, because, like I, like I told a lot of you, is that we got that $500,000 grant from the, for the meters, so it's going to pay part of the meters, and we're going to be able to use, uh, about $300,000 to change our software. So as soon as we get the grants in hand and, and everything's worked out, then we will start working on changing our software. When I started, we, we had just, that's how old it is, 20 years ago. This, that's what I started, because we were doing the conversion, and, uh...
I have to run it for you.
That's what we changed for reasons.
I, I will. The transition gets difficult sometimes. Obviously, there's some training issues and such, but in the long run, it'll be beneficial. The record-keeping and the efficiency will be increased dramatically. I think you'll find, if you do improve it, that, yeah, it's a, it's a little...
Could you, for the record, explain, um, the, uh, federal, um, issue that the officials, uh, Mr. Brown wants to address through the auditors about the fact that it really was, uh, not our personnel?
And, and it isn't, but it's still, we do a, uh, something called a single audit, which is the federal award, and when I audit that, it's still attached. Um, if you would, if you would care to, let me get to it real quick. Forgot what page it's on.
I think this is important because we deal with so many grants that we're fiscalizing for other entities, and we don't have total control over the staff that have to follow up, and it's not our staff, it's the other employees that we're dealing with, other entities.
Right. It's on page 162, if you want to go to that. And actually, I'll also address the prior year finding, which was resolved, that, along with the re-statements, that's the one other issue from the prior audit. There was some budgetary concerns prior. They addressed them. I, you know, just, that's one thing, that make sure that you're not spending in excess of the budgets and, you know, it's usually an easy solution, so, but I was satisfied with the improvement at that level, that we went ahead and removed that. That was from 2013 originally. The finding that we are discussing is FA 2015 dash 001, a lack of control over dispersments. It is with a CFDA, so it is a federal award finding, and it's honestly at a location that's not really adjacent to the town itself, so it is, it is difficult to track it. Um, and I think they've been having ongoing conversations with just trying to keep them to just maintain records. That was the primary issue with it. The dollar amount, as you'll see, is a $156.73. I think, in all honesty, though, had I dug a little deeper, there probably would have been some more like that, just in fairness, but it is, it is not something that the, that they have direct control over. You know, they can't go and hold hands and force people to maintain the proper records.
But, but at all, at the same time with his backup showing it, I can reinforce it with these other entities, that either they do it correctly or we're not going to work with them. And I have justification, this is not just coming from the Town of Silver City, but our auditors also noted it, that, that it is an issue. So, um, it's, I, I appreciate them putting it in there for us to reinforce and help us follow up on that.
No, I would say I thank you as well, because I think, my question was more to make sure that the public understood that this was not through a fault of, of our staff and that we haven't, um, unmodified, um, I'm saying it right, it's, it's used to be unqualified, and now it's unmodified.
Unmodified.
Yeah, and that is the best you can get in terms of...
Exactly what you want, that's right.
Right, and so I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that, that this does assist the town in making sure that our collaborators and our partners are following what we need them to follow to make sure that we don't have this happen in the future.
Correct. And, you know, nobody's perfect, and all auditors are different, and like I said, you know, there could have been a couple other things, but really minor things. I think the overall, the controls are in place as far as the financial statements go. So as a result of that, there were zero findings at that level.
Well, thank you very much, and once again, I just want to compliment our staff. I'm on the excellent job that they've done, um, for the year, Mr. Brown, and Anita, and Stephen, and Amanda, and, is it Renee?
Renee.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to know two people that are here, uh, the, and the protesting Anita and Priscilla, the other county techs, so, you know, it takes the, the whole team. As well as with the utility building, that's where all the money comes in, uh, with, uh, with all of those guys, so they, everybody does an excellent job.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain the motion. Counselor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the Town of Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and second for approval of the Town of Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015. Is there any further discussion? I'd just like to add, uh, thank you for, for your work, um, you know, ultimately, well, you work for all the third parties, but, uh, in, in many cases, you're working for us directly, uh, helping us ensure that, uh, our staff is, is doing their job and, and doing it well. Um, not that we've ever really had any doubt, um, you know, it, it doesn't forever, unqualified opinions, unmodified opinions, um, many of those in the last decade with zero findings, which, um, I, I'm an accountant as well, and is almost unheard of for an entity this size. I, I'm actually surprised, um, you almost have to kind of dig and, and, and yank them out, and it is a, a credit to our staff, and, and we, we do have a wonderful staff, um, and it starts with, with leadership. The Finance Director and Town Manager, um, he sets a, a culture of, um, doing things right and, and doing it well, and, and owning up to mistakes and errors and, and getting them corrected to the best of our ability, and, and I think staff has followed suit. They've done a remarkable job, uh, taking his lead and, and executing a, a good finance department, so I appreciate everything that, that's been done on all parties, um, and I, uh, fully support, uh, the council, hopefully approving this. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and second is read into the record. All those in, we don't, roll call.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, and we like to work with our clients. We're not overreaching for findings, but when we notice stuff, we definitely want to bring them to the attention so that they could get corrected in a timely manner. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under, under number 11, approval of consent agenda. Um, note, all matters listed under item 11, approval of consent agenda, are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. A, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash four, adopting a fair housing policy. B, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash five, citizen participation plan, CDBG program. C, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash six, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification. D, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash seven, section three plan. E, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash eight, CDBG procurement policy. Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda with matters listed being resolution number 2016 dash four, adopting a fair housing policy. Resolution number 2016 dash five, citizen participation plan, CDBT program. Resolution number 2016 dash six, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification. Resolution number 2016 dash seven, section three plan. Resolution number 2016 dash eight, CDBG procurement policy.
Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
We have a motion and second is read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, under new business, 12B, approval disapproval of resolution number 2016 dash nine, amendments to the Town of Silver City's Employees Personnel Manual. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, you, you have a packet that has a, a red line and, and, uh, the changes included in the, the Personnel Manual as recommended. Uh, the, all the, the majority of the changes, uh, were done to comply with federal, state, federal and state law, as well as, uh, some that are required by our insurance. And then there are some updates in there on procedural issues that we found through the years that needed to be updated. Um, there are also a, a few, uh, changes in there that were made per resolution, a separate resolution outside the, the Personnel Manual itself, so those are included and shown in there. Um, so, I know Saya provided a summary of the changes as well, so if you have any changes for Saya or myself, um, nothing is really major. Um, I think the only one that is, is, I would consider sort of a major change would be the sick leave bank, uh, because you used to be able to borrow from sick leave. Now you have to, um, uh, we're requiring that if you're going to donate to another employer, you have to donate vacation to that, to the individual that's going to take sick leave. Uh, the reason being is that, um, we don't want people donating their sick leave, which is intended for them to, to use if there's that big need, for instance, meat. I mean, and we can build up quite a substantial amount of sick leave. I've got over a thousand hours of sick leave. I'm not paid that out when we leave. Uh, but I can use 240 hours for, towards early retirement. The unions have a little bit different, uh, number, I believe, they have different, um, early retirement amounts that they can use sick leave. But aside from that, you know, we've had a number of employees that have abused their sick leave, and, you know, we just want to make sure that people really monitor the sick leave and use it for when they're sick. And, and if they're going to be willing to donate to somebody else, you donate your, your vacation, which is paid out, which is actually an asset to you as an individual, uh, because that, that goes with you if you terminate your employment. Um, so that's, that's the only one that, and, and that is required by state law. The state law was passed last year, and, and we could either, either use sick, sick leave or vacation. Uh, there's nobody from the unions here, so, uh, all of these were sent to them, the department heads, uh, and everybody. I believe that the one that we had the hardest time getting consensus on was the, uh, was the dress code, and that took us a while, but we, we got, uh, something that everybody can live with. Uh, so other than that, do you have any questions of me or Saya?
Counselor Amos Smith?
I, I only have a question, I have a comment. I think it's, uh, for many years, I was a, I mean, a journalist, I also worked in academia, and how, uh, how diligently have to keep up with these kinds of personnel policies? They are the way that we, you structure the common knowledge about how we're supposed to behave, how employees are supposed to act and behave. And I just want to acknowledge that I know that it took a great deal of time and work to do that.
You know, Saya's been in charge of personnel for longer than, a long time, I'm not going to... She's, she's got a ton of experience, and she's, she's a huge asset for the town. Uh, she's a huge resource for, of communities and other organizations around Southern New Mexico. Everybody's always calling her for help, and, and she did a lot of good work on this.
Counselor Edison?
I have a comment as well, rather than a question. I was, um, impressed that we have done a really thorough job. Saya, you've done a great job of making sure that everything has been up to date, has been updated, and that the resolution for the longevity has been included in there. That was done in 2013. It's, it's good to see that this will be a nice, you know, for future adjustments, it's, it's leveled, and everything has been done, and I appreciate the work that everyone has put into it, so thank you very much. And I'm glad that the, the unions, um, had a chance to review this, and they've accepted it, um, the changes, so it's a good thing, so, thank you.
How did the, uh, you, when you got consent from like the, uh, unions and such, how, how did that come in? Is that, was that a formal consent, or?
Uh, they didn't have to come in and give a formal consent, but they, they were included in the...
They have 30 days to comment. Uh, it was sent to them, and it doesn't mean that, uh, all the town, kind of, their comments are going to be included, but we did take it into consideration, for example, the dress code, uh, we got other, uh, drafts from other, uh, areas, like the Society of Human Resource Managers. They sent me three different ones, and we went with the less strict one, and even then, we kind of toned it down to comply with, uh, employees what they wanted and the unions. So pretty much, uh, where they can comment, again, just like anyone can comment, but it doesn't mean that everything's going to be changed as to what they need.
And they did share and participate in the...
Yes, and the thing, they, there wasn't a ton of, of real interest from the unions in the Personnel Manual, because each one of them had their own contract that, that supersets this, so anything that's not included in their union contract, this, this leads, but if it's included in the union contract, then that leads. So, you know, this more is, uh, for the exempt employees, because this is what covers the exempt employees, other than the contractual employees, such as, um, me and a few of the department heads who have contracts a little bit different than, than, we still have to follow this, but we have a little bit of different benefits or whatever it might be than this, that's...
Counselor Edison?
Um, I move to approve resolution number 2016 dash 09, amendments to the Town of Silver City's Employees Personnel Manual.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll second it, as read.
We have a motion and second for approval of res- resolution number 2016 dash nine, amendments to the Town of Silver City's Employees Personnel Manual. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and second is read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointments to the Cemetery Board, and I was going to make some appointments, and I didn't copy it down, so let me, uh, get the actual, so that I actually remember and don't mess it up. We're reappointing, um, Elizabeth Miller and Carl Scholl, who have been active members of that, uh, committee for quite a while, and, and I was a part of that committee and, along with Ryder South, unfortunately, um, and both of those individuals have been, um, great assets to that committee and, and have participated heavily, and, um, if there's no objections, I'd like to reappoint them.
No.
They are appointed.
Mr. Ray?
Counselor Edison?
I will adjourn.
Counselor Ray?
Uh, Mr. Monica, I'm going to second it.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? We are adjourned.